Let's bow our head. Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, it's again, the end of another day, Lord, we bow our head before you. Thank you, dear God, for this with for the present moment. Ask to God to give us all of our sins and shortcomings. Lord, we ask for you would be the ones in the hospital, the ones for the deaf and blind, with their history, dear God. Please hear our prayer tonight, and have us down in this meeting, let it be done in that hour and cordin' and pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is reading and approval of the previous minutes, the eight minutes. Okay. We have a move on the second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm going to say because I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Okay. All those in favor? Raise your hand. Okay. Raise your hands. The next thing on the list is old business, but do not have any. New business is rezon, nine, nine, two, twelve, eighty-four. We'll now open a public hearing on that. Would you like to?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Watson submitted a rezon of a proposed one acre of property located on All Red Mill Road. Current zoning for that property is rural residential. We're needing to change this to her suburban residential, I believe it is, in order to facilitate a one acre tract. That was what she's able to secure is one acre out of the R R. So we just need it for that one tract acre that she's proposing cut out. Planning and development staff recommend the approval of this zoning request.
Is Ms. Watson here? Do you want to add anything?
I just want to, like I put in the paper, I just want to, you know, one day, that's like growing up for my parents' house, growing up and everything, I'd like to be close to my mom and dad one day. So it's just become available, so I thought I'd, you know, try to get it in.
Any more questions? Ms. Watson. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve what is recommended.
Okay. We have a motion to set up for approval. All those in favor? Raise your right hand. This matter is closed. Public hearing is closed. The next thing on the agenda is review or can you order this with Mr. Calvin?
Mr. Buckingham doesn't have anything to add. I think I can start by recap, and I think what we talked about in the last meeting, which was kind of go back to some of the things we talked about. We talked about tiny homes and campers and how potential looking campers and that temporary occupancy where they're not permitted necessarily for full-time occupancy, but under certain circumstances like the management of a construction project where it be residential or potentially commercial, an individual could get a permit to do that temporarily, where that could be kind of managed and looked after by county officials, particularly tied to a building permit with a period not to exceed 24 months of time for that temporary occupancy. Something that was discussed in that meeting was, you know, tiny homes. And I think something that I didn't address, that was something that I should have, that got brought up in the last meeting, was something I looked into a little further, and that was the ability in your ordinance to have what's called an accessory dwelling unit. So for instance, if somebody wants to have a quote-unquote guest house, a garage apartment, or build a secondary detached dwelling separate from their home, a small, they're saying mother-in-law suite, things like that, that could be for someone's kids moving onto the property, live with the parents, want to be in a separate house or separate building, or vice versa, some one who is moving their parents onto the property, just as a way to be close to one another and help each other out, have that opportunity. And I did look at several communities in our region that have some language in their ordinance that kind of addresses that with enough flexibility to cover an accessory dwelling. And I looked at Bartow County, and I believe the city of Bremen both had provisions that are fairly similar, but a little bit different. And just to try to figure out, just to give y'all a little food for thought, I think I had sent that out, and you can look at those two things and see the city of Bremen and Bartow County. I think Bartow County's was probably more close, and just to, let's kind of summarize that, in Bartow County, what they call an accessory dwelling unit is a detached dwelling unit, such as a guest house, pool house, garage apartment. It's located on the same lot with a single-family dwelling unit. And the square footage of a guest house may not exceed 50% of the heated and finished floor area of the principal building, or 1,000 square feet of finished heated floor area, whichever of the two is less, and may only be used as family members or guests without payment or consideration. So these aren't something that someone's going to use as an apartment on their property in a single-family neighborhood. And you don't want to necessarily, because y'all have provisions in your ordinance, I'm sure, that prohibit people building two detached, single-family, full-size homes on property, because that can create some issues later on when, you know, the family moves off, or the next owners come in, and you've got two full-size houses on a single lot. What's likely going to occur is the next owners are going to come in at the point of sale, or the realtor, when they're trying to sell that home, and they're going to want to subdivide that property, and those two, you may run into some issues there. So we want to make sure that these are kind of smaller accessory-type uses, and not another dominant use of the property. And so that's just kind of a way to keep that in check, but also not to rule that out as an opportunity, because you do want to have that flexibility for people to have the opportunity to have a guest house, potentially, like I say, for family purposes, probably. And that was one of the major topics last time, something to follow back up on, kind of the tiny house topic. So that's not considered what we call quote-unquote a tiny house. The tiny house movement, I think I sent a couple of things out there, one piece from Jenkins and Bowen, which is a very highly reputable law firm in Georgia that deals with a lot of municipal and a lot of county law. And they've got a lot of experience over the years across the state in doing various things, and they did a great presentation a while back, and I looked up the specific portion of that, I think I highlighted where that begins, and it's got one with a green highlight on it. And then just talk about in there about if you're going to consider tiny houses in your community, these are the steps you need to take about where, you know, where zones are applicable for these, you know, what types of things to look into. It's a very well-written article, it's fairly straight to the point. Following up on that, there was another page called Appendix Q, the headline of it. And Appendix Q is something that has been proposed to be included in the International Building Code, which is a pretty well-standard code that most all building officials use as they're permitting dwellings, whether they be single-family, multifamily. And so this is supersede zoning, this is building code. And one of the things we talked about last time is that up to this point, that code has not permitted what people consider tiny homes. It's been the single most difficult hurdle for communities that are, you know, that really do want tiny homes and have allowed them. It's this issue of there not being building codes. So even if you do allow it in your zoning ordinance, your building code is probably not going to permit that, at least not if you follow the International Building Code requirements. So that hasn't been updated, though, in over a decade, and so since this has been, you know, this kind of fad, tiny homes has been arising in the past 10 or 15 years, this has come after the last revision of that. So in the last couple of years, they've been working on the most latest and greatest update of that code, which I believe is going to roll out in January 2020. So it creates, it's going to come out. So what they did was they created Appendix Q. Granted, again, it's not adopted, it's not official until 2020, but y'all have a copy that I believe that I gave you. It says Appendix Q, and that is basically the long and the short of building code that will address tiny homes. So that, the International Building Code, can say that they do have provisions that would permit a community, if they so choose to adopt Appendix Q. So it's not forcing everybody to say you have to adopt this code, and you have to permit this kind of dwelling. They're just creating an opportunity for there to be some method of inspection for tiny homes. So if they could, if they meet the criteria in Appendix Q, be approved at a local level based on the International Building Code. Because up until now, the only way that a local government could approve a building permit for a tiny home, as we know them, is to have an architect, an indoor-engineer, do a very expensive and very costly process of drawing that up into a schematic, and submitting that to the local building official, and basically that architect signing off on it, the liability that it is a safe, inhabitable structure. Because that's the biggest argument with tiny homes, is that to get down to that square footage, and you're putting these lots and things, you've got low ceiling heights, you've got very tight quarters, you've got very limited ingress heat dress, and there's a lot of things, you know, for fire hazard and public safety that kind of come into play with these things. And up until that point, if a county signed off on that, and worst-case scenario, the structure catches fire, if there's a fatality or serious injury that was deemed a result of the building being sub-quality, substandard, and that was officially signed off by the local government, that local government is at that point likely going to be liable for signing off on that. So again, now, they're creating this opportunity that the local government could adopt Appendix Q and look for this in the future. So I did want to include that particular piece in there, just to show you that there have been measures taken at the national level to create the opportunity for this type of housing. But again, that, there are standards in that, so it's not just really nearly, there are things that have to be met, criteria to be approved. So there is a set of standards. Because up until now, what we call tiny homes, there were no real standards to address them. International Building Code, Local Building Code didn't address it, Manufactured Home Inspection did not address it, and neither did your RV and camper, and they even have National Code that they have to fall through. So these tiny homes, up until this point, have had no real national-scale type reliable building inspection, so that they can be legally permitted without going through an incredibly costly procedure, which would basically mean that the idea of affordable housing and tiny homes is kind of apples and oranges. If you're having to get an architect and engineer to draw up your plans and go through a long, lengthy approval process, it's probably not going to wind up being the affordable option for you. You could probably wind up building a 900-square-foot, single-family detached dwelling faster and cheaper. And, you know, that's another thing about tiny homes, is that they are custom homes. They can't be built on a spec basis unless you have a large manufacturer, like a manufactured home producer that can create them, because they are entirely custom. And if you look at the, I think there's a color sheet print out, I see Holmes has a copy of that, that's put together by the Department of Community Affairs, the state of Georgia. Because of all the interest and because of all the topics of this coming up around the state, they created a fact sheet on tiny homes, and what is a tiny home, and what separates a tiny home from just a typical home. So that kind of drove a couple of things in there, because there's ones that, you know, they, some of them are built on chassis with a trailer, and some people want to be able to put them on a foundation, and that's where you get into the weeds of being able to get a building permit, when you start putting a structure on foundation and things like that. So that kind of addresses some questions and quick facts, just to read and kind of learn about, you know, what are these tiny homes exactly, what separates them out. And so those three things, there's a bit of information there, and that Appendix Q, January 2020, is going to be rolling out. So that option is definitely out there. But going back to other ideas or other ways to address, you know, some floor areas, you can look at a couple of your zone districts you may want to acquire, and your zone districts that are more larger lot, single-family oriented, create minimum square footage for those single-family dwellings. And I think when we talked about, they were fairly conservative with that, starting at maybe 900, and then some of your larger estate residential-type developments requiring 1,500 square feet. They're both pretty conservative square footages as far as the modern building. And that's just, again, that's to protect the integrity of those larger estate neighborhoods, to make sure that you are creating this ability to have higher-density residential, lower-density residential in a way that is harmonious and not at conflict. And so made a couple of changes there, as far as those minimum square footages are concerned. And that's, I think, kind of it in a nutshell. I think we talked about farm winters, agrotourism last time, the event center, I think we came to a pretty good conclusion on that, that a good definition for farm winder and agrotourism is a special use, and then the idea of the event center being a commercial use, if it's not tied to agrotourism and a farm operation. So I think that was a pretty good consensus, is something to maybe move forward with, and potentially look at that as an ordinance adoption. But since there's still some conversation occurring as far as the tiny house conversation, I did want to give y'all some more material on that, maybe digest that, and we'll come back to that. The accessory dwelling units, I think, is a great way to balance that out, if you do require minimum square footages in some of your zone districts, that even though you're requiring minimum square footage in the larger estate residential areas, that you're potentially working in that caveat, that they could have an accessory dwelling unit for a family member if they, if they're suddenly wanting. I'm happy to answer any questions, y'all.
I found all this very helpful, I appreciate it. So Ron, what do you want from us tonight? Or you have?
To be perfectly honest with you, I think we ought to just take a review of it, to see if it meets what you're looking for, what you feel the county needs, and then we'll come back with a recommendation. Once we have that recommendation, we'll present an ordinance, get it put in ordinance form, and then we can move forward with having an open meeting to allow the public comment. And then once we have that, we can forward it on to the commissioners, to see if they chose to adopt it into our county ordinances, and we'd move forward from there.
I noticed on the Appendix Q, these are, I mean, it had dwellings 400 square feet, these are absolute minimums, but the county could require more than that, so.
Currently, one of the things that the county is doing, and Mr. Calvin addressed it, let's say that somebody chooses to build an additional building onto their property, and he did address that as well, with our health department regulations set up as they are, if I have a second house on that property, that house has to have the minimum lot size already in order for the septic system to go in there. Also, it addresses in the event that that property sells, and they come in and want to split it, then I'm not creating a lot smaller than what that zoning classification's calling for already. If they don't have that size property to start with, then we won't issue a building permit on something that doesn't meet minimum criteria for that zoning classification.
Yeah, because these are, I know the floor level located more than 30 inches above the main floor, I put question mark there, 30 inches.
There are things that we can address as we go through ideas. That's why I'm choosing to give you that opportunity to look at and see if you have one.
And that's the one they're recommending, you know, for children wearing. I was like, oh, you know, kidding, you know. I was waiting to see that they were at least going to have a rail up there at guards, so that people would be a little off.
Right.
Because this is, I just don't know how anyone could actually, a family could live in, in this definition, you know, really. And the skylights, this would be another thing that, another way to get out, but even then, I think it would be very hard to get out with a fire. I don't know how much of the smoke would rise in you without being able to even get the skylight open to get out of it.
I think another thing to point out, too, to address, you know, the affordable housing, I mean, I think that's an absolutely valid argument, but in my perspective, in communities that are working towards solutions towards affordable housing for their workforce and so forth, if you look at a tiny house, again, it's not all the time a very cost-effective home to build because of all the intricacies and the custom ideas. But the other side of that is Pickens County outside of the super-service area, which I think is predominant, the majority of the county, the health department will dictate how large your lot has to be, which I'm sure is probably an acre at the smallest, I think, for a single-family dwelling. If you're going to have at least an acre lot, you're going to have to have an onsite sewage septic system, and all these things have to be done in permitted dwelling regardless. So, you know, the real way to address affordable housing is generally done in areas where you have sewer accessibility, where you can do higher-density housing at a lower cost per square foot rental, and that's generally done in municipalities, where you have apartments, duplexes, various things like that, that can be through programs like the Department of Community Affairs, they can be essentially assisted with funding and things like that to create market-rate housing that's subsidized, and creates, addresses the affordable housing aspect.
These are not going to be cheap? I mean, this is not affordable housing.
Not if it's done, if it's done to the standard that it needs to be built to, it will not be affordable. In the same idea that, like I say, someone could go to an area where there's, you know, small-scale apartments, and, you know, real affordable housing, where you've got sewer and things like that, where public safety, health, and other things are considered as part of that, so.
But if they're not, even. I think it's going to be a fad in a way, I don't think this is a long-term housing arrangement. I don't know. Any more questions for Mr. Calvin? Or for anyone?
I don't think that we should allow 400 property houses for a family living, now one person might get by on that, but she had three, four, five, six, seven, eight children. Just giving them a little.
Just trying to move around and have space for kitchen and bathroom and refrigerator, because sleeping on the shelf like up above it, but, you know, just trying to really manage that, because the ceiling even isn't going to be as high as I am. I mean, just functioning and trying to change the sheets a bit, but. It really would. Okay, any other area you want to cover, should I, because the tiny homes?
The only other thing is more on a personal level, addressing the Christmas dinner. When would y'all like to do?
Important.
Important, yes, that we can do that. And then also, need to announce that this will be my last meeting. I have been offered early retirement, and barring something catastrophic changing that, I will be taking that retirement probably sometime in mid-December. So it has been an honor and a pleasure working with you folks. I've worked for the county now 22, almost 23 years, and with the early retirement, it afforded us an opportunity that couldn't pass up at this time, and I sincerely want to thank each of y'all for giving me the slack to pick up the speed and helping y'all with the planning commission and stuff, and I thank y'all very much, and look forward to hoping to help y'all in any way I can in the future.
Just gotten settled in.
I know. It must be a hard month to work.
Breakfast that we had.
We do have one good thing, Mr. Calvin has graciously agreed, he's working with the county to find a suitable replacement for me. I've tried to lower the bar as much as possible, so we can get some. But I think they will do an awesome job in finding a replacement, and I look forward to seeing how the county advances in the future.
Oh, it will be missed. Lost Marcia.
Now we're back to the dinner, the Christmas.
Ladies are really excited.
Miranda has a couple of dates, if y'all would be interested in listening to that for just a couple of seconds.
Okay. December 9th is our next meeting. We didn't, at this time, we do not have anything. So we didn't know if that, if y'all would be interested in that, or the 16th, because there's two dates that we were going to throw out there for December.
December the ninth.
By email?
We have one item that's coming up, but it's in a progressive mode, it may take several program, or several months to process it. We'll be sending out the information emails, or sending a copy to Mr. Hensley, addressing this issue, something that you can take a look at, start reviewing, because it probably will come up the meeting in January.
So you're going to work really hard this next month to get all this settled down before you leave?
I'm failing. Mr. Calvin has done a phenomenal job with his time and resources and efforts to put together some of these things, and.
This material was very good.
From a personal standpoint, listening to the phone calls and stuff that we get, there's virtually not a day that goes by that somebody doesn't call requesting either a tiny home, or last week I had somebody wanting to bring in two shipping containers and attach them together and put out here, because he couldn't find a place to locate them on any county south of us. So we have to go into all these different things.
I just don't, maybe it's my claustrophobia, but I just don't feel that shipping containers is adequate. I don't know, you know.
It's.
I haven't seen them finished up to live in, but still.
You see them on TV, and, you know, they look phenomenal, but.
We see a lot of things on TV, but I don't know that.
Things on TV don't always make it somewhere out in the west end of Pickens County, so.
No. I think I'm the only one here that's looking for them from the west of Pickens County, no. I mean, this is, I think this is one of the most difficult things that we have come across, since I have been on this commission, and it's because there's two sides for it, you can see those sides, and it's just a really hard, hard thing to do.
I know, I don't think the county's ever made a study, but does anybody have any idea of how many homeless people we've got in the county?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm trying to think of who might, could address that. Probably some of these agencies behind us might have a, might have some sort of formula or might be able to determine that. As far as the county has looked into it, I'm unaware of anything, but they, if they have, I have not heard of anything.
This is not an answer for homeless people, because they can't afford it, they couldn't afford it.
The problems that we're starting to see are growing is basically that people are wanting to get like these storage units that you see out on 515, and then tell them, well, I'm going to put insulation in the wall so I can live in it. Mmm, that thing doesn't meet code, so. And it's heartbreaking to have to tell somebody that perhaps that's the only thing they can afford, that I can't do it, or the county can't do it, until it comes up to code and standard.
I don't wear one leg.
I don't wear one of these metal carports that's enclosed, dividing two people, or two families living in it. I don't even know, they got a concrete floor or dirt. Certainly don't have a bathroom, so.
Unfortunately, in this position, I've seen some really heartbreaking things and some scary things, that it's like, you can't do that, but they have nothing else, nowhere else to go. So you're right, it's a very difficult situation, very difficult problem to address.
Any more comments on that?
Ethan, thank you, good information.
Yeah, it's excellent information, it has really.
And Rodney, congratulations on your retirement.
We're looking forward to it.
I bet.
Tell us what we done to run you off, and we'll find out and do it.
Y'all were actually one of the reasons that I would stay. It was just the opportunity or the way that the proposal was orchestrated and the way that it was presented, it gave me an option, but the options, the best option was to go ahead and take the retirement, and that's something that I'm extremely grateful to the Pickens County government, foresight that they saw in going into this, and I believe I'm one of nine or 10 that are, fell into this category. And it's, it's been my life for the last 22 years, it'll be 23 in March, so it'll be difficult to say goodbye, but hopefully I'll be able to come harass at least planning and development every now and then.
What goes on the other side? Any other, anything else, something to move on? Okay, the next thing is board comments. Board comments, public comments. What do we think, I think I'll be coming out tonight, do you want to have people there with us? I think we're just saying what we do, because it does affect everyone. Next thing is adjournment.
A adjournment.
Okay. Got adjournments, I'll go some paper. Okay.